Good morning. Good. All right, well, good morning, everybody. Happy New Year. I am pleased to call to order the January 5th, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three Commissioners, and I am going to ask Ms. Kaylee Silver to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to begin with some opening comments this morning. Monday, January 9th, is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. This is a day to show our support for the brave people who put their lives on the line to protect and serve our communities. Specifically, I want to recognize and thank the Montgomery County Sheriff and Sheriff's Deputies, Montgomery County Detectives, Correctional Officers, Probation and Parole Officers, and County Security for their work every day in service to Montgomery County residents. I also want to thank all the local police officials who are members of the 50 police departments throughout our county, as well as the members of the Pennsylvania State Police who patrol in Montgomery County for their service. I encourage anyone who's thinking of a law enforcement career to consider working for the county. We have many current openings and are actively hiring for many positions. To see a full list, you can visit moncopa.org/jobs. Next, I want to share some information about a series of no-cost-led remediation training and certification courses being offered to our businesses and residents. This series is part of the county's efforts to reduce the number of children poisoned by lead each year. This course teaches individuals how to properly eliminate lead paint hazards present in older homes. Through lectures and hands-on experience, participants will learn about lead contaminant and decontamination procedures, waste disposal, cleanup strategies, and clearance protocols. Monco employees are encouraged to register team members to -- I'm sorry, Monco employers are encouraged to register team members to increase their capacity to perform lead hazard control work. These free in-person classes will be held over two days at our Public Safety Training Campus in Conshohocken. Classes will be held on January 3rd -- I'm sorry, January 23rd and 24th, February 13th and 14th, February 21st and 22nd. Participants who pass the test after the training will have an opportunity to apply for the Pennsylvania Lead Worker Certification at no cost. This training is open to people working in construction in Montgomery County, people exploring this line of work, and others that might be doing construction or remodeling their own properties. The Monco PA Free Lead Worker Certification is sponsored by the Montgomery County Office of Housing and Community Development and the Office of Public Health, with grant funding from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. To learn more or to sign up, visit moncopa.org/calender for dates and more information. Finally, I have an update on our Small Business Grant Program. This program is designed to directly assist small businesses as they continue their recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. The program is funded by American Rescue Plan Act dollars. To date, our Recovery Office has received 140 applications for the Small Business Grant Program. This grant program provides funds to qualifying businesses in Montgomery County, which are either located in a qualifying community of Pottstown or Norristown, or can show a financial loss due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Businesses can qualify for up to $20,000 in funds, and again, these are grants that do not need to be repaid. The intention of the program is to support businesses that have been impacted by the pandemic and related economic challenges. The grant program is intended to ensure that businesses with less historic access to capital are supported, such as businesses owned by socially and economically disadvantaged groups. The Recovery Office seeks to allocate 60% of available funds to these groups. So far, 38 small businesses have been selected as grant award recipients. Applications are still being reviewed on a rolling basis, so we encourage additional businesses to apply. Please be aware that if you were not selected in the first round, you will be considered automatically for the next cycle, so there is no need to reapply. The public can access the application portal on our Recovery Office website at moncopa.org/recoveryoffice. The Recovery Office will award up to $500,000 in grant funds to businesses every 30 days until all available funds are distributed. A total of $2.6 million is available. For application assistance, free help, no-cost help, is available by contacting the Pennsylvania Health Access Network at 610-750-8200, or by emailing monco ta@pahealthaccess.org. And Kelly, I assume that information is on the website as well? Yes. So you can get access to all of that information, again, at moncopa.org/recoveryoffice. And we really encourage folks to share this with your networks. And now I will turn over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Okay, thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. As I've mentioned, over the past few months, we've had holiday donation drives going on that our county departments have been running to help our citizens with some of their basic needs, such as food and clothing. So I want to thank our county departments and employees who have voluntarily jumped in and worked through the holidays to make sure people were fed, clothed, and had something under the tree. Our Montgomery County Office of Health and Human Services held several donation drives, and I want to give a special acknowledgement to Veronica Hillman, who has coordinated all of these efforts and has for several years now. Here's a summary of what was collected and how many residents we've been able to help. In its third year working with community partners, HHS distributed 373 Thanksgiving Meal Boxes, along with a total of $7,425 in gift cards for turkeys. The winter coat drive brought in 783 new coats, six cases of new clothing, plus 250 individual pieces of clothing, 24 boots, 45 blankets, 12 cases of assorted toiletries, and an assortment of hats, scarves, gloves, socks, and underwear. The HHS toy and gift drive brought in 4,000 items, including toys, balls, small electronics, personal care items, books, bikes, skateboards, and more. 50 cases of small toys, hair accessories, socks, gloves, 130 filled stockings, 398 Phillies items, go Phillies, four bins of books, and 250 toys, gifts, coats, items of clothing were purchased from the Amazon wishlist. In addition, a total of $16,810 in gift cards were collected for 965 clients in the Office of Children and Youth, Veterans, and other HHS offices. In total, the HHS program office was able to help close to 3,000 clients in a number of ways through these donation drives. And other departments of the county, such as the Recorder of Deeds Office, the Prothonitaries Office, Adult Probation, and the Sheriff's Office, also helped to collect personal items, toys, foods, and clothes. And of course, none of this would have been possible without the generosity of all the donors who participated. So on behalf of Montgomery County, I want to thank all of our citizens and employees involved for their time, effort, and generosity in helping others through difficult times. And there are still opportunities to give. You can visit www.moncopa.org/hhsdonations for more information.
That's amazing. Really, really impressive.
Great numbers.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay. All right. We will next move on to public comments on matters appearing on the agenda. Mr. Stein?
Yes, thank you, and happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
All speakers should sign into the meeting sheet available in the back of the room or virtually, as indicated by Ms. Cofrancisco. All speakers should come to the podium if they're physically able. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. Those seeking to speak during the time set aside for public comments on items appearing on the agenda must state the specific agenda item which they wish to address. Those seeking to speak during the time set aside for general public comments must identify the subject matter that they wish to address. All public comments noted. Say your initial objection.
Giuseppe Monticelli. Objection one is, look, we need more time. We need five minutes. Can't make a meaningful statement in two minutes. Second, I've been told that people that are joining us on Zoom can't see the people that are making comments. They should be able to see us, and that would be my objections.
Noted.
I second that.
Second, wait on table for the motion.
All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the Commissioners for consideration, or which may come before the Commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. You state the nature of your objection.
Pauline Braccio. That does not apply to the general. It only applies to the agenda items. We've gone through this before.
Noted. Thank you very much.
I second the objection made by Pauline Braccio.
Noted as well. Whether a matter is germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. The time limit of two minutes will be monitored by county staff, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The Board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded this is not an opportunity for dialogue or questions and answers. The Board Chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including but not limited to yelling from the seats, arguing whether a matter is germane to county business once solicitors made a determination such, or refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and being requested to sit down, shall be grounds for removal or muting from the meeting with further admonishment or warning.
Second, the objection.
State the nature of your objection.
The sunshine law, the PA sunshine law, also states that when you -- when a person comments, their comment is supposed to be at least listed in the minutes, and they're supposed to be the way the person said it. And in this one, it says Pauline Braccio made an objection to letting David Morgan finish speaking. Well, no, I would never object to letting him finish. I was objecting to you, Josh Stein, interrupting him. So when you -- does Stacy do the minutes?
Your issue is with the minutes. You'll have to reserve that for public comment, period.
Well, it's violating the sunshine law.
Commissioners always welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedback at Commissioners at moncopa.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Ms. Cofrancisco?
Okay, we'll start with agenda item public comment. So first, we have Pauline Braccio with agenda item comment on items J, K, and L.
I had to -- Pauline Braccio comments in township. I had to put J, K, and L because since we are to speak before these are read to us, I don't know which ones are highest rated or lowest responsible bidder. And I'm very still concerned why you went from lowest responsible bidder to highest rated, because I don't believe that there's that many experts in the county who can actually rate these companies. I think there has to be another way. Barbara O'Malley did explain it to me, but I want more definition, and I'd like to see it in action at some point if that is possible to set that up. So yeah, I don't get the highest rated. To me, it sounds like the person who's going to bid the most so he could get a bigger kickback. I mean, it really does sound suspicious. So I think you ought to revise that, say it a different way, do it a different way, because it does sound suspicious, and I don't know how much money you're putting in your pocket. You know, especially with this super center over here, the Justice Center, that they're going awfully -- to me, it seems like they're going slow. We've already paid, what, $232 million? And I don't know how many floors it's going to be. I would like to see a blueprint. I want to see the actual -- I want to see an artist rendering, because that's imaginary. I want to see the actual layout of the building for each floor, and how many floors there will be. You know, and then I understand that the historic courthouse is going to be revamped, or whatever you want to call it. I'm losing my words right now. But if you're going to do that, why wouldn't you do that first? And then see if you actually needed another building, because you don't really need another building. And you know, I remember Del Richie complaining about mold. I've been through the courthouse. I didn't see a speck of mold. So somebody could show that to me. Thank you.
Next, please.
Next, we have Giuseppe Monticelli for agenda item comment on items G3 and J1.
Giuseppe Monticelli, Springfield and Conshohocken. G3 here, we have the Commissioners' appointment to the Presidential Board of Inspectors. I would hope Commissioners that you would go ahead and appoint qualified candidates, perhaps maybe even a citizen or two onto that board, instead of just medical doctors and people that have credentials in the medical field. It would be nice to have at least a person, maybe even who is a, you know, ex-convicted person who has rehabilitated themselves to be on that board. Someone who maybe even is a retired corrections officer. You know, it'd be nice to get their point of view of things, instead of taking, you know, whoever comes along down the way and saying, you know, pickpocketing out of you and saying, hey, yo, I give you $1,000, put me on the board. I give you such and such money. That's what it seems like to me here. I want to talk about J1. You got a contract award, assets, and infrastructure. It's going to be some garage doors here. What type of garage door you're getting for $31,000? Are we talking about some Sally Port garage doors that have to be bulletproof here? And it would be nice for Ms. O'Malley if you can go ahead and get information to her at halftime, and maybe it can be put out on the website before she reads it off. It would be nice to get details. I've told that many times before, at halftime, of what we have here. I yield the floor to you, madam.
Next, please. Next, we have David Morgan, who has agenda item comment on K1, 2, and 3.
David Morgan from Ambler. I'm on the K1 municipal permit fees of $1.5 million. The $1.5 million cost for municipal fees seems way too high for taxpayers. How could it be so much to check on construction and approve paperwork? Is this spending for the county campus? For the Justice Center? Agenda items should be dedicated to specific projects, so the public can comment precisely about them. Minutes -- oh, yeah. Comment could be as the items are explained. So minutes in the past have stated no public comment, as if there was an opportunity for public comment along these lines. So as Commissioners, consider when we should come in for the public comment, when we're more informed. Then, agenda items K and 2 and 3 are for the OMP, which is the Old Montgomery Plaza here, and earlier a part of the county campus spending. So is J1, $31,000 for the OMP doors, as mentioned. Every county campus cost should be found directly by a simple link from the front page of the website. Taxpayers that speak with me say they're not pleased with a tax hike of 8% following hikes of 5% in 2021, 8% in 2022. You should thoroughly announce and hold town halls at each campus of community college to explain the costs of these tax increases. There's a limit to chains of property tax increases with consequent hikes in rent that residents can afford. Businesses may relocate if more taxes are demanded, and if their employees cannot easily live in our county. Input into 2050 goals should vigorously promote spending within our means to help citizens dealing with inflation and to retain our local businesses. I mentioned this about the link on the front page of the website, because trying to find the finance section, the ongoing cost, and trying to see where our money is going is really, I think, something that should be easy for us, not having an open records request. Something really simple.
Next, please.
Okay, we will move on to general public comment. So we'll start with the people in the room again. We have Pauline Braccio.
Pauline Braccio comments in township. It was brought to my attention, there's a video on YouTube about PennDOT, when somebody changes their address on their license, the driver's license, that PennDOT is actually changing voter registration parties. And I was -- saw that one at the primary. Somebody came in, and I said, well, you can't vote because you're not in the book. And she said, I'm a Republican. And then I had to call in here, and they said, oh, she's listed as an independent, so she could not vote in the primary. And she thought about it, because the only thing I've done is, because she recently moved here, is I changed my address on my license. So this video tells about how PennDOT does that. So when you're looking at the voter rolls, you're not looking at what is real. There are people who are being removed who should not be. There are people who are being left on who should be taken off. It's a mess. And I know that Dory Sawyer comes up here, and she gives all this long explanation, one time was a half hour, and I know that she feels offended. However, this is the stuff that's going on. And another thing with PennDOT, I don't know how PennDOT got so involved in politics, but that $5 registration fee, which is collected by PennDOT and then funneled to the county, what have they got to do with that? I mean, that's basically laundering money. Oh, you're not giving it to the county. You're paying PennDOT, and you can't get your registration unless you pay that $5. So you're laundering money, and that's actually another tax. So you're giving yourself a 12% raise. You're increasing income tax to, I mean, property tax to the people for 8%. That's a 20% disparity. You know, do you do math? You know, I don't understand how you can get away with this, but no matter what anybody says, you do what you want. Again, you're supposed to be working for us. I would love to be Commissioner. This is election year, you know, and I'm thinking, well, why don't I just put my hand in the ring? At least I come up here and I speak the truth, and I'm not a criminal like the rapist over here. Thank you.
Next, please.
Next, we have Giuseppe Monticelli for general public comment.
Giuseppe Monticelli, Springfield and Conshohocken. I want to talk about the PennDOT thing. That comes from Southeastern PA Community Watch on YouTube. It's a recent video that was uploaded, I believe, on the 28th of December. You know, the guy comes up here, he simply talks to her clerk at the voter services, and he's like, yo, I withdrew my name out of the book eight years ago, but I just recently renewed my driver's license. Could that have something to do with it? So she takes the confirmation ballot in the back, and she looks, sure enough, PennDOT sends over new updated information. Oh, well, it looks like you were inactive in the system, so the system just reactivated you? And it's like, well, hold on for a second. I filled out the withdrawal form. I shouldn't even be in the system. So how did it reactivate me? So that can't be happening. Madam Chair talks about of how the county doesn't have a county police force, and how there's county security only, and really, they only do like, you know, civil type of processes and that type of thing, but there's no county police force, okay? Well, that's so true. Why is it that unit number 40 and 41 are patrolling around in Springfield Township, specifically North Hills Country Club, in the parking lot for hours on end? I don't see any prisoner in the back. Just beats me what's going on there. It really does, when we aren't supposed to have a county police force. I understand they have jurisdiction. I understand they might be in the area, but when you have the same vehicle, unit number, in that parking lot over and over, something gets a little suspicious with time. And that's what I would say with that. And I would hope with the Justice Center that we get to see a detailed drawing from an architect on that. Thank you.
Next, please.
Next, we have David Morgan for general public comment.
My topic today is adoption. This year, I would like to see in our county a renewed effort.
Mr. Morgan, the county has limited involvement with adoption, so I would just ask you --
My clock's running while you're talking.
Ms. Cofrancisco, just one moment. I just want to be clear, as we've stated with these rules, you are required to keep comments related to matters related to county business, items that are issues that might appear on the agenda.
You'll see.
Now, this is general. I'm sorry, David. This is general. Are you confused, Josh?
All right.
You'll see.
All right, thank you.
Is my time going to go backwards?
You want me to go ahead and get started, and then she'll start the clock after a second or so.
A renewed effort. I personally have seen the joy of adoption that brings a child, brings to a child as well as his parents. In your 2017 October 19th meeting, of all the Commissioners who were here, you were involved in announcement of November as National Adoption Month. At that time, Justice Cheryl Austin and Agency Administrator Lori O'Connor spoke and were awarded a proclamation with other agency leaders. In that year, 581 children were adopted in what was described as happy events. Four years later, there was a mention of a National Adoption Day in the November 18th, 2021, meeting with 137 children adopted, but not in 2022. Although we've had a marvelous program in the county called Monco Mamas to help improve black birth outcomes, that also was not featured by this Board in 2022. There was election season that included a grim promotion of abortion of the unborn children. I grieve for them.
Amen.
Jesus did not focus on taking life, but in His creative way, He said He is the life. And we should consider the least of these. Let's have a change of course in 2023. Successful birth outcomes in Monco Mamas and National Adoption Month, recognition and support are life-affirming ways to go. This year of 2023, let's do more for the mamas and the papas, and of course, the children. You could place a link for adoption by the Office of Children and Youth on the front page of the website, so we can encourage a growth in adoption happiness.
Okay, we'll move to our virtual participants. Kim Henderson, you can now unmute.
Thank you, Kelly. Good morning. My name's Kim Henderson, and I am with East Norrington. I just wanted to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Can you hear me? Okay, there we go. Just wanted to wish everyone a Happy New Year. I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to make public comments, and for those of us who are working on, at 10:00 a.m. on Thursdays on a regular basis, that we can have the opportunity to at least try to come on to the virtual comments. So I definitely appreciate that opportunity. And for everyone in the room who are making public comments, I thank you so much for speaking for We the People, and for bringing all of the concerns that we have to the Commissioners. And I'm going to also take this time in this new year to just offer a prayer. So, dear God, we ask that you please bless our Commissioners, that they make decisions for the county in your name, in representing all of the people. We ask that you bless all of our first responders, Lord, our sheriffs, our police, our firemen, that you keep them safe in this year as we go forward. We ask that all of the county employees make decisions that represent We the People and your name, Lord, and that the money that is being spent is in fact being spent in the best way possible for the highest and best use of everyone in the county, and in doing all good things in your name, Lord. And so I just wanted to thank you and also say amen. Thank you so much, Lord. But I thank you all, and I hope that everyone has a wonderful new year, and that our county grows and represents all people in the best possible way. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Carol Johnson. You can unmute. Again, it's, it might be Karen, if that's misspelled. Okay, it looks like you're unmuted there. We're not able to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Carol Johnson, and I'm the Vice President of the Voice the Men Empowerment Youth Mentor Program in Norristown. And I just wanted to personally thank Commissioners for supporting Voice the Men Empowerment, so that we continue to help our youth in Norristown stay out of trouble. And I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate your help.
Thank you, and thank you for your work.
That concludes our public comment.
All right, we will move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the December 15th.
I will move to approve the December 15, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. France, we have a resolution for a planning assistance contract for East Greenville.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Happy New Year. This morning, we have three contract renewals for our popular community planning assistance program, and it's the right time of the year where we see a lot of these. These contracts all expire, expired on December 31, 2022, and they will be renewed for a three-year term through December 31 of 2025, beginning January 1 of this year. The three communities are, starting with East Greenville Borough. And the work involved for them includes contracting to complete their Main Street design guidelines, provide grant writing support, and provide general flexible assistance as needed. That contract is a total of $47,586, of which 50% is attributable to the municipality in an amount of $23,793. West Norrington Township is also being proposed for renewal. They requested that we complete a comprehensive plan revision, and that includes plan implementation such as zoning and subdivision ordinance requests and updates, along with parks and recreation planning and general services. The contract amount for West Norrington would be a total of $103,824, with the municipal share being $51,912. And finally, Douglas Township is asking us to complete an audit and update of their zoning code, grant writing assistance, as well as the Main Street revitalization plan, and that contract will be in the amount of a total of $77,868, with the municipal share being $38,934. Resolution to approve these contracts before you.
Thank you. I will move that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby approve the contracts for municipal planning assistance outlined by Director of Planning, Mr. Scott France, and that the proper county officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Just one question, Mr. France. How many, do you know off the top of your head how many municipalities we're up to at this point?
We are presently at 35.
That's great.
Fluctuation between 35 and 36, plus we have four regional planning groups, which are separate contracts.
That's great, yeah, that's wonderful, good. Okay, if there's no other comments, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, Ms. Silver, with approval of amendments to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff, and Happy New Year. So I'm here today because back in November, the County of Montgomery proposed to amend its 2019 Annual Action Plan in order to revise the Community Development Block Grant Cares Act funding, or CDBGCV, funding for previously approved projects. In the 2018 Annual Action Plan, we received $5,467,274 to incorporate the award of CDBGCV funds, which included homelessness services, public services, and infrastructure work. An amendment of the Annual Action Plan is necessary because under the County's Citizen Participation Plan, a decision to make changes in the use of these funds from one eligible activity to another is needed. The county now proposes to amend the 2019 Annual Action Plan in order to reallocate $200,000 of that money in CDBGCV funding, which was designated for permanent housing to support youth street outreach, an existing project to verify, support, and engage and help connect homeless youth during or due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I want to reiterate that this funding is just moving around some dollars. We have other dollars, we have over $10 million coming in for more development of affordable housing. We, back in November, a resolution was done to obtain the views of residents, publish this proposal, and get input from public agencies and other interested parties. We put the substantial amendment on public display from November 23 to December 23, and we held a virtual public hearing held on December 7. All public comments were accepted, and all public comments were in favor of this amendment. And today's resolution will finalize the proposed change.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize the amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan, including the attached list of proposed activities for funding under the CDBG-CV3 program, and formally recommend the plan to the participating municipalities and nonprofits within the County of Montgomery County, and to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, as listed in the exhibit attached hereto. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a Commissioner's appointment to the Prison Board of Inspectors. I will move to appoint Mr. Gary Henler to the Montgomery County Prison Board of Inspectors for a term that will begin immediately and will expire on January 5, 2026, serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. I will take a moment just to address one of the public comments earlier. Our Prison Board of Inspectors is a board where the commissioners appoint about half the members, and the courts appoint the other half. And to the point raised, members, as was described as suggested members, are included on that board. There are individuals in recovery, there are formerly incarcerated individual, there are individuals who have worked at our own correctional facility on that board, and we feel that it's a very good representation of our community on that board. Any other public comment, or, I'm sorry, board comment? No? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, motion carries two to one. Next, we have a Commissioner's reapportment to, or reapportments to the Mental Health, Developmental Disabilities, and Early Intervention Board. I will move to reappoint Lauren Hughes, Ruth Lansman, Janice Ness, Luna Dana Brant, to the Montgomery County Mental Health, Developmental Disabilities, and Early Intervention Board to serve terms that begin immediately and expire on January 5, 2026, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the mental health and intellectual disability of 1996 and the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, Ms. Calder for the personnel report.
Thank you. Good morning. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, January 5, 2023, with a timestamp of 9:00 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I move to approve the January 5, 2023 Personnel Presentation, as given by First Assistant County Solicitor Ms. Maureen Calder, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. It is O'Malley, advertisements, bids, and RFPs.
Yes. First, we have an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for visitation coaching for the Office of Children and Youth. A successful responder will provide visitation coaching services to families whose children are placed in out-of-home care with a permanency goal of reunification. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Two, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for justice-related services for the Office of Mental Health. A successful responder will provide justice services to individuals that experience serious mental illness and are involved in the criminal justice system. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Three, an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for Your Way Home Call Center Services. A successful responder will provide Your Way Home Coordinated Entry System Call Center operations. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montcopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of RFPs, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, awards of contract for the county.
One, contract award assets and infrastructure. One Montgomery Plaza Garage Doors, Russ Reeland Doors of Ben Salem, PA, $31,500. Contract provides for the removal and installation of two new doors for the One Montgomery Plaza Garage. Specification 6492 was viewed by 18 firms with two responding. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, contract award information and technology solutions. Vovionics Document Solutions of Hackensett, New Jersey, $38,763. Contract provides for archives digitization services. Contract is for a one-year term beginning December 2022. Services are available through the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Contract. Three, contract award planning commission household hazardous waste collection. MXI Environmental Services LLC of Abington, Virginia, $500,000. Contract provides household hazardous waste collection events throughout the county per the proposed cost schedule. Contract renewal is for the period of 1/1/2023 through 12/31/2023. Services are available through a PA Department of Agricultural Contract. Four, contract award supervision services, drug and alcohol mental health evaluations and treatment services, Resources for Human Development Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, $535,670. Contract provides for evaluations, referrals, and consultations for criminal justice clients. RFP 20260 was viewed by 29 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Contract is for a period of two years with two optional annual renewal terms. Five, contract renewal information and technology solutions. Human Resources Employee Management Software, NeoGov of El Segundo, California, $27,807. Contract provides for a web-based human resources software program as per RFP 2038. Program includes a training portal for employee development, performance, and talent management, and an applicant tracking system. This is the first of two annual renewal terms. Six, contract renewal Human Resources Retirement Plan Consultants, Lincoln Financial Group of Radnor, PA, $240,000. Contract provides for the management of the county's 457 retirement plan as per RFP 1517. Renewal is for the 2023 to 2025 term. Seven, contract amendment planning commission supplemental reimbursement agreement for flood wall construction, $277,130.62. Original contract between James and Francine Spence, 6007 West Valley Green Road, and Montgomery County provides for the county's additional portion of the costs of the construction of a flood wall and related work on the Spence property. Amendment provides for final required scope to complete project. Construction of access road, repair of water line, additional wall height due to Hurricane Ida, additional excavation and paving, relocation of 850-gallon propane tank, and increased material costs. Eight, contract amendment finance, Widow Bryant's Washington, DC, no cost. Original contract provides for emergency management consultation and advisory services for federal cost recovery reimbursement relating to the COVID-19 emergency. Amendment provides for a no-cost time extension of the contract through 3/31/2023 for final closeout and audit support. Nine, there is one contract renewal and three amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and in the back of the room.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have awards of contract for assets and infrastructure.
One, municipal permit fees, Norristown Borough of Norristown, PA, $1,514,198. Payment of required fees for construction, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permit fees for the Justice Center project. Two, contract amendment mechanical construction services, One Montgomery Plaza, Guy M. Cooper Incorporated of Willow Grove, PA, $2,839. Original contract provides for mechanical services for the construction of a new electrical infrastructure system in One Montgomery Plaza. Amendment provides for final ductwork revisions for the project. Three, contract amendment fire protection services, One Montgomery Plaza, Guy M. Cooper Incorporated of Willow Grove, PA, $7,369. Original contract provides for fire protection services for the construction of the new electrical infrastructure system in One Montgomery Plaza. Amendment provides for the county requested replacement of newly discovered broken valves and calls for the retesting of the fire pump after connection to the new electrical system.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, motion carries two to one. Next, we have awards of contract for the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force.
Yes. One, contract award vehicle, Whitmore Auto Group of Mountjoy, PA, $53,100. Contract provides for a 2023 Ford F-250 truck for use by Delaware County Emergency Services. Vehicle is available through a PA CoStars contract. Two, contract renewal software, ESI Acquisition Incorporated of Atlanta, Georgia, $142,479.50. Contract provides for the renewal of the Web EOC software for the regional counties. Web EOC provides real-time information sharing of operational details from various government and public safety groups in response to an imminent threat, emergency, or disaster. Software is proprietary.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Any closing commissioners? Okay, then I will announce that the next meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners will be on January 19, 2023, and I will move to adjourn the January 5, 2023, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any comment? Hearing none, move to a vote. Any negative vote? Meeting is adjourned, and we will move to Salary Board. Good morning to our Controller Sanchez. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, too.
And we will convene Salary Board. Ms. Count Francisco, is there any public comment on Salary Board? No? Okay, then Ms. Calder.
Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a four-page document dated Wednesday, January 4, 2023, with a timestamp of 11:00 a.m. Of note, we have four employees retiring. Kathleen Candelore from the Commerce Department after 17 years. Denise Nushwander from Housing and Community Development after 36 years. Mary Ann Clayparch from the Office of Public Health after 20 years. And George Sauerman from Voter Services after 38 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the January 5, 2023 Salary Board presentation, as given by First Assistant County Solicitor Maureen Calder, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same? Move by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. And I know Ms. Silver is here to speak on behalf of Ms. Nushwander after 36 years, right, with the Department of Community Development, Housing and Community Development. Good morning again.
Good morning again, and hello, everyone, to the Salary Board. I am honored and humbled to be up here speaking about Denise Nushwander's time here at the county. I've decided, I usually plan out all my remarks every time I'm in this room, but I decided to speak more from the heart because that's what Denise would do. Denise is an incredibly passionate person, and she is passionate about one of the most central values of our office, which is the right to affordable housing. She is an expert in the area of funding, building, and partnering with those to supply more affordable housing in our communities. In her 36 and a half years, she started in 1986, she has, under her leadership, helped develop more than 1,300 units of affordable rental housing and affordable homeownership. We are third in all of Pennsylvania for the number of units we have invested in federally through our HUD Home Partnerships Investment Program, and that really is thanks to her. She has incredible knowledge in the HUD programs, but again, I think what most sets her apart is her passion and commitment to this. She will be dearly, dearly missed, and it's also, it would be remiss of me not to also mention that on a personal level, she helped start and lead the Montgomery County Choir, which is a huge, huge honor, and just, you know, I've only known her for about six years, and in that time, she has offered me so much wisdom and support, and we're just really grateful for her time, sad to see her go, but happy to see her start this next chapter.
Thank you. It's wonderful, and I concur with everything that you just said. She's terrific. Ms. Sawyer, you are here to speak on behalf of George Sauerman after 38 years with-
38 years, so.
Happy New Year.
I'm sure most of you know George from your time in either helping out at the Voter Services Warehouse or just popping in to see how election prep is going, but George, as many of you, anybody who has met him, has been the human equivalent of operational Google in our department since 1984. He can answer pretty much any question that starts, hey, do you remember what year we, with ease, and usually answers in the form of a pun. George has shown an unparalleled level of dedication to the voters of Montgomery County. George has learned the ins and outs of at least three voting systems, helped administer 38 primary elections, 38 general elections, untold special elections, and seen Montgomery County grow from 355 voting districts to 426. In 1984, 282,000 people voted for president compared to over 511,000 in 2020. George has seen it all, supported it all, and led the operations through it all. George is certainly one of a kind, and our team feels- George is certainly one of a kind, and our team feels lucky to have worked alongside, alongside him, learned with him, and laughed with him over the years. We wish him nothing but the best as he finishes his book, inventories his famous coin collection, and spends time with his dear wife, Carla.
That's really great. Thank you. Mr. Soltizak, did you want to say a few words?
Just a quick word to congratulate both Denise and, uh, George. And a particular note about George, I actually forgot he'd be writing a book. I was hoping he'd still be at the payroll when he finished it, so we had a chance to, uh, sort of preview. I guess not. Yeah, on elections, obviously, there are thousands of people, and some of them are in this room who help make, uh, election days happen twice, twice a year, and there are dozens and dozens of county employees who are working, uh, to make the elections, uh, successful every year, and no matter if we're electing a president or a poll worker, it's always the same amount of work, and it has to be done the right way, every detail, every time, and George has done that, uh, that quiet work for 38 years, and so we will miss him, and we thank him for his, his work. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we always, we, we talk a lot about kind of the unsung heroes here in the county, and I think you just heard about two of them today, as well as our other retirees. There are so many people that work behind the scenes on behalf of this community every single day, and, uh, we are grateful for every single one of them and thank them for their service. And for this, uh, current group of retirees, we wish you a very long and very happy retirement. And with that, I will ask if there is a motion to adjourn the January 5, 2023, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Controller Sanchez. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.